Good evening, everybody. Welcome tonight to our town council meeting, which we're going to begin with a public hearing on an ordinance appropriating $10 million for the costs related to the 2020-21 road and bridge improvement program and authorizing the issue of $10 million bonds and notes to finance the appropriation. So, um, isn't that?
May I begin?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One, two. Did everyone hear? You guys hear okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first by saying thank you for hearing this public hearing. As I explained to you when we introduced this bond ordinance, it is the hope that the board passes the ordinance tonight and then sends it on to the public for referendum. If so, the referendum would be at the November 3rd, 2020 election cycle. I'd like to update the board since the last time we spoke about it. I did present this to the Board of Finance along with the Superintendent of Highway Parks, and I'm happy to say that they unanimously recommended it back to this board. The town attorney will explain a little bit later, but we also sent it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they also sent bad examiner's recommendation. Just to refresh your memories, the hope is, is that if this gets approved by the public, that we use a base of $2.5 million a year and supplement that, whether it be with state funds or with budgetary funds, to spend approximately $3 to $3.5 million per year, which is about the maximum we can do based upon our staffing. And we'd like to do that for the next four years and then prove to the public that this is a very good plan, and then come to the public again four years from now and continue the process.
This is not the first time that you've done this much.
That's correct. We've did, we did two others of these, one for, both of them for $11 million, and they've been very successful. We have not done one recently, so therefore, we've been using monies that were coming from the budget, which has a direct impact on the taxpayers. So, we're trying to do the bonding aspect and then get in the habit of doing it every four years, so it levels out the effect to the taxpayers.
Before we open up the public hearing for public comment, anybody on the dais want to ask a question or share?
Just a positive comment. So, the way the roads are prioritized, I think is really important for residents to know, so that it's not roads where people live in certain aspects of town, but they're really rated and prioritized for the roads. If you want to talk a little bit about that, Mark?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to give the whole presentation again, but maybe a two-minute synopsis by our Superintendent of Highway Parks on how the, the program that you gave us the ability to do last year, how it's going to work. So, let's turn, Chris, to our Superintendent of Highway Parks.
I wish I was taller, but I'm not.
Don't we all?
Yeah, when you enter in all the information, it basically prioritizes the roads in a manner that gives you, like I said last time, the biggest bang for your buck, which basically increases the average PCI of the roads the most. So, from all the scenarios that I ran, for the next few years at least, it is suggesting, the program is suggesting that we do the roads that are in the worst condition first. We can manipulate that a little bit by weighting the PCI and the functional class of the road differently, but if you hold them equal to each other, it basically does suggest that the best idea for now is to do the worst, the roads that are in the worst condition.
And that, that's very reassuring that we have a system in place that is not favoring a certain road because a certain person lives on it, or, you know, those things that sometimes people wonder.
Correct.
And so, I like that very much, yeah. Yeah. Anybody else have a question?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
So, I just wanted to point out also, Annette, that I think it's important when you put, after you do some of the roads, and then you can put additional information in.
Yes.
I think that's very positive, right? Because then you'll see the overall impact on the town and the roads.
You will. You will. And I, and I, you know, you mentioned the last two referendums, and Mark said that we were very successful with that. And I think the data they collected and this program really shows that too, because as I said last time, the average PCI is a 76, which is a good average.
Very good. Any other questions for the superintendent or the manager? Um, don't go too far, though, Annette. Someone else might have a question, so.
I would like to invite anyone speaking in favor of this issue before, the public hearing, to come forward, state your name and address, and feel free. Anybody want to speak in favor? I see that person getting up. Mr. Perillo.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
For the record, Lou Perillo. I'm the town's Economic Development Director, and I'm also a taxpayer locally. I'm here in support of the bond. $10 million sounds like a lot of money, but when you're looking at over 200 miles of roads in town, it's much cheaper in the long run to maintain and take care of roads than have capital reconstruction projects all around town. As taxpayers, we're going to pay one way or another. If you hit a pothole and you need your front end done, you know, it's going to come at a time that might not be timely. With a good plan in place, this is good for businesses, it's good for the people, because you could plan long-term. The plan that is in place was done by professionals. There is, like you said, Madam Chair, no favoritism. It's based on the roads itself, and a good maintenance plan costs less in the long run. Deferring rarely has value, because again, the reconstruction of a road costs significantly greater than just maintaining. And again, with the transfer of expenses, we've had issues in our industrial parks when we had some problems. The repairs and the damage to the trucks cost significantly greater, and that's why maintenance is so much of a factor. And again, it works well in planning for budgetary purposes as well. It makes sense financially for the town. You can plan for it rather than running out and fixing things very similar to a household. So, in conclusion, it helps to maintain property values. It makes financial sense. It's good for the long-term town for budgeting. Good infrastructure is good for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perillo. Anyone else speaking in favor? Thank you, Peter.
Good evening. Pete Anderson, 1177 Marion Avenue. I am in favor of this, and kind of my angle is, as a bicyclist in town, I think the improvement, especially of the worst roads first, is going to make it safer for both bicyclists and drivers who are trying to avoid the same, you know, potholes in the road. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else? Second time and third time, anyone else? All right, I'm going to close. I'm not going to close it, I know. Anybody speaking against this item, open for public hearing, please come forward, state your name. Anyone speaking against this? Last time. Anyone speaking against the, the public hearing item? Well, thank you, everybody. We're going to close public hearing, and we're going to begin our town council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi. James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky. Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Valerie DePaolo.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here. Thank you so much. Could we stand, please, for the prayer and followed by the salute, the flag salute?
Lord, may you continue to bless and keep Southington and her people. May you direct and lead this council in all her endeavors, as we seek to do what is right and just for all people. Amen.
Amen. Would you join me in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I have a, a motion to accept the minutes, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
A second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good, thank you. Councilmatic communications. Mr. Del Santo.
I do have something. I had the pleasure of attending Bristol Health's grand opening. Actually, Councilwoman DePaolo and I were there last Thursday evening for the, the grand opening of their facility. It's a beautiful facility. I was joking all night long, I can't believe it, this was a Rite Aid. I spent a lot of time in that Rite Aid, and it's just, it's state-of-the-art. It's, it's hospital-like. It's just, it's fantastic, and I was blown away by the things that they're going to be able to do in this, in this building. So, really good stuff, and we wish them the best of luck. They put out quite a spread, very nice event, good time.
Pat, and did you want to add anything, Val?
No, I second that.
Yeah, very good.
Very nice building.
And we welcome them into town.
Welcome them to town, definitely.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Yes, Chris? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, Chris?
Sure. On February 19th, I attended the volunteer fire recruitment and retention monthly meeting, and I have a few items to report on that committee's efforts. I meant, I reported at a previous meeting that there were 13 new recruits from the recruitment efforts. That is, that number is down to 11. Two people had to drop out of the fire class, but still, classes over the size of 10 are not common. The one, one of those two is a student and said that he would return to the fire class in July once the school year was over, so he's just postponing. So, our numbers are good there. There's media work that's ongoing. In addition to the interest cards that I shared previously, posters have been made and delivered to 10 fitness facilities in town that enthusiastically agreed to, in the fitness center, have recruitment signs for the, of the fire department. They're looking at Southington Magazine also as another media outlet for their messaging. And in early spring, there's going to be a meeting at the, there's a meeting at the high school, so high school students can go and learn about volunteering in their community. And then they'll have a table in the CAF where they'll be doing some recruiting, and they'll also be working with the counselors at the high school who interact with the students, making career choices. So, that's a new approach that they're trying, working with, with the young students in, in our town, who we hope to become contributing adults. Website upgrades are ongoing, and then there's a monthly event that the fire department has a presence at. They set up a table, they talk to people, and distribute recruitment materials. If you were at the Polar Plunge, you would have seen a table. There was lots of interest people, a lot of informal conversation. February 23rd is the Healthy Family Fun Fest at the AquaTurf. They will have a presence there. There'll be a truck down there, I believe. And then, there is a whole schedule. I'm not going to go through them. I'll announce them as we go through the, the year, maybe a month or so in advance of these different events that the fire department, the recruitment committee will be present. They're really working hard, and they're committed, they're committed to growing our volunteer ranks and looking at ways to retain those who are already in, in those volunteer ranks.
That's great news. That's excellent. Very good. Yeah. Councilwoman DePaolo?
Thank you. So, I just, just a quick reminder that the 15th Annual Southington Reads event is Wednesday, March 18th. Kristy Sadowski just wanted me to mention, if people are interested in registering for that, they can register online on the website or go to the library and, and register.
Very good. Excellent. Anybody else?
Just a couple of quick positive things. So, first of all, as Councilman Pulis mentioned, the Healthy Family Fun Fest was yesterday. Just want to acknowledge and thank the YMCA for taking, being instrumental in that event, and also STEPS, which was, which was a part of that as well. Also, just a couple other updates with STEPS. The survey was given, if you remember, I mentioned that a while ago, for 7th, 9th, and 11th graders, so we're working on getting that data out to the community at some point. And finally, just a shout-out to our staff for the ongoing issue with, with our youth is vaping. So, they, Megan Albanese and Kelly Lepard, our staff for STEPS, went and gave presentations to the high school, about 190 staff members, about the dangers to recognize it for the kids vaping, and then they also gave a little bit in, more in-depth presentation for the health teachers. So, hopefully, we're trying to get to the core of the issue.
So important. You know, Chris, I sat through the presentation at Rotary. Megan came, and of course, Kelly was there as well, and it was such an eye-opening presentation. I would encourage anybody who can get to see this presentation, it is very chilling. And when you see the extent of what we're looking at with kids vaping, it is, it is mind-boggling, really and truly. So, yeah, congratulations to STEPS getting out, trying to get out in front of it. I know it's, it's so difficult. I do have a question, though, Chris. Will you be doing, you know, usually, they do an unveiling of the stats from the survey. Will they be doing?
We actually just had a executive session, executive committee meeting today, and we're ta, we're still talking about.
Oh, okay.
How the results will be unveiled.
Yeah.
You know, we're just trying to do something a little different this year.
Sure, of course.
So, we're not exactly sure yet.
Yeah. Okay. Great, great. Thank you. Anybody else? I, oh, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Last Friday night, I had the pleasure to attend a middle school sports fundraiser at the high school, and it was a smashing success. They said it was even bigger than last year. I think there was something like 70 different restaurants of people that donated food to the occasion, and it was well-attended.
Excellent. I, I just have a couple of things. Councilwoman DePaolo and I were at the Southington High School Robotics fundraiser over at, at the AquaTurf. I didn't get any of my bidding. They, I didn't win one thing. Not one thing.
Open up that wallet.
She bought a lot of tickets.
I did. I was cranking those bids up, but what can I tell you? But it was great to see all the kids there, and the alumni came back for it, so it was really kind of, kind of exciting. I want to congratulate the, our high school marching band. They've come back from Disney World, and they performed magnificently, as they always do. And, and the last thing I wanted to say, I know there was a little article in the paper about Kennedy Middle School, and I'm sure DePaolo is, is there also, but there's a conscientious effort to start going green in our schools. I think that's so important. So, I just wanted to give them a little bit of congratulation. So, if there's nothing else, we can move on to report on special committee. The first committee listed is our sewer committee. Bill?
Sure. So, we had a pretty light agenda. Received an update on the progress of the sewer plant. We're still within schedule and still under budget. We also approved a few small change orders, and we're still significantly below our contingency. So, both those items are pretty good news.
Any questions? All right. Apple Harvest Advisory Committee. Chris?
We had a meeting on February 12th. So, a couple things. The website and social media sites are all up to date, so you can check those out if interested. Vendor applications are coming in, so if anyone's interested in being a vendor again this year, please get that application. They're available on the website. Tents are being plotted as they come in, so take advantage of that if you're interested. And we reviewed our final budget, so the final amount, very similar to what was reported in the past, but the profit for the 2019 Apple Harvest Festival was $29,500.
That's great.
Okay? So, and we started planning out budgeting things for 2020 as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Chris. Self-insurance. Chris, Pulis?
Yes, I'm self-insurance committee met on February 19th, and have three items to report. For January, the month of January, we were $372,000 under budget, which was an extremely good month compared to past months and Januaries. It puts us for the year $336,000 under budget. So, we're, didn't make any changes to the level of funding. We reviewed the level of funding for this budget season, but decided to wait until our March meeting, which will occur just a week before the Board of Finance meeting, when they finalize the budget, because if we wait till March, we will then have January and February data. So, while we had a great month in January, we wanted to just make sure there's not, like a bad month in, in February and so forth. So, we're going to wait until that final meeting, and then with all that information, we'll make a decision if there's, if an adjustment would be appropriate to the level of funding for, for this budget season. And lastly, one of our annual activities is to review and discuss the self-insurance fund balance policy. Several members offered different ideas about changes. Some of it was as basic as language. Some of it was about the philosophy of if and how we would use the fund balance. And so, since we had that initial discussion, we decided we would digest the ideas, and we would come back to the conversation at our next meeting and take action if, if that's the path we want to take.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Yeah. All right. Very good. Anyone, any other special committees that would like to share something? Hearing none. Let me just go right on to Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first time I have to report, reported the Board of Finance. As I said earlier, mainly what they took up was, the first thing was the review of the BOE budget that was presented to them, and of course, that process now begins. The second thing they brought up was the public hearing for the $10 million, which as already mentioned, was unanimously sent to you. Important dates that are coming up for the Board of Finance, tomorrow and Wednesday. My key departments will be presenting their budget, well, my budget, to the Board of Finance, and they'll be asking any questions to that. And then, as you all know, on March 2nd is the public hearing at DePaolo Middle, Middle School for the entire budget, both BOE and government side. Any questions on that? If there's no questions on that, as you know, the, we've had a diversity committee since the appointed by the last council, and we've continued it through this council. We've been doing a lot of work on it, and I've asked our HR director to give an update on currently where we are. We do have some concrete ideas, and of course, they'll be presented to the diversity committee for final recommendation back to this board. As you remember, our walking orders were to look at the town's policies and procedures, specifically when it comes to hiring, when it comes to discipline, when it comes to areas of police policies, fire policies, et cetera. We've looked at all of those things, and although we're not prepared to give you final recommendations at this moment, I do think it's at the time we should give you an update on what we're working on, so.
I'm very anxious to hear.
Our HR director.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. So, to, to start, thanks for the opportunity to come up and share an update with you. The diversity committee was comprised, as you, as you know, of town of Southington employees and some community members, and a list of them are provided, and I provided one to you earlier. So, if you wanted further information about them, we can certainly provide that to you at a later date. We had five meetings since May of 2019. Three of those meetings included presenters who were recommended by our committee members. They included Dr. Tucker Sims. She reviewed, reviewed her work with diversity and inclusion with the City of New Britain. She encouraged us as the town to review our resources, ensure that we are accurately advertising what Southington looks like and how diverse we really are. Then we had Ingrid Kennedy, who's been working with the Southington School District and their Social Justice Coalition. She encouraged our group to begin by identifying what our goals were. She also reminded the committee that the work's not something you rush into, you take your time, and you do it right. So, they were good pieces of advice and good information gathering for our committee to get started. We also had the opportunity to have Kathy Larkin, Lara Nichols, and Rich Lopataski from Town of Southington employees, and they are part of our subcommittee for the website. So, they gave a preview of their work on revamping the website. So, of the five meetings, we did have those presentations. So, what was the committee purpose? To ensure the policies and procedures set forth by the Town of Southington support equity, inclusion, diversity, and fairness. So, how are we going to do that? We came up with three goals. I'm going to tackle them one at a time. Goal one, end any racial disparities within government, so that there's fairness in hiring and promotions, and to have opportunity in contracting and equitable services to all residents. So, how does that, what, what does that mean to all of us? So, a lot of that really has to do with the hiring practices, and we have to identify what the best hiring practices are. So, HR, our office, had reported out what we felt and how we feel we are accomplishing the best hiring practices. So, we reviewed current practices, and we need to identify if they're valid. So, the Human Resource Department has been working on hiring practice through the school district for years. Currently, we do have up-to-date hiring practices, which we're very proud of, and those practices are consistent between the school district as well as the town. So, having the merged HR office has allowed us to ensure that we do have consistency and we are following the past practices that we feel are the best practices. In addition to that, involving HR through the hiring process, that was not necessarily always the process. A lot of times, what happened, it was run through the department teams or a leadership team, or a, you know, hiring person within a department. So, what we tried to do was make sure, or not tried, what we are doing is we are making sure that HR is involved in all departments and all hiring. So, with the exception, of course, of police and fire, they have a very different process and application, as well as testing. But our current practices, what they do is, HR is, connects with, whenever there's an opening, HR connects with the department head. We review with them what the needs are, what they're looking for in the next candidate. We ensure that the job description is accurate and up-to-date, and if it's not, we make sure it is. We post and advertise a position according to union contract, and as you all know, that determines whether it's going to be in an internal or an external posting, and contract does dictate that. We review the applicants through the HR office, because they come in online. And then what we do is, we review the list, we review the qualifications, and then we know what the qualifications are, because we've already met with the department leadership team, and then we forward to them the candidates who are qualified. Then we help with scheduling the interviews, assist with questions, and we attend the interviews to ensure, again, that the same process is being followed, so we have equative, equity across the board with all hiring practices. So, involving HR throughout the process is very important. We knew to, outside of what the police and fire are doing, one of the things that they did do, though, after being part of the diversity committee, they have made some adjustments already in what their practices are, and they've extended out their requirements, making some adjustments, and they have broadened their candidate pools. So, they are following through in their own end, but doing what we're trying to do throughout the entire town. New this year also, the summer work positions through the Recreation Department, where there used to be a paper format going back and forth. What we did was, they're now came through the online system, so they're going through the same process like everyone else. Again, equity. Hiring without bias, this is something that many people don't even realize that they have, that there's implicit bias. So, I'll get, I'll talk more to that in a couple slides, but this helps by having the HR department. We are the objective person that's looking at that, forwarding on the appropriate candidates according to qualifications. Through the job descriptions, so we have been, I have to admit, it's been about a year, that I've been trying to tackle the beast of our job descriptions. They may not be the most current, so we are ensuring that we update those. We met with every one of the department's heads to go through all of them, but putting them into the new format, making sure that our minimum qualifications are up-to-date, making sure that everything is accurate and doesn't refer to typewriters, is, you know, is just part of the process. So, it's taking a little bit of time, but it is something that we do, because providing clear set of standards for all positions is, is imperative. Updating advertising materials, so in response to advertising materials, it's anything from our pictures on our website to any brochures or any of our individual, individual webpages to show the diversity that's throughout the town. Incorporating a statement on all job postings that identifies the Town of Southington's commitment to and value of diversity and inclusion. Understanding the limits to referrals, this is something that we talk about when we're getting into HR, helping with reviewing the qualifications. Sometimes referrals, people hire people who are just like them. The goal is to not have everyone just like you. The goal is to have a pool of candidates that you can bring in other opinions, people who are not like you, to help grow and bring us to a different level. So, it's important that we are part of that process and recognizing that. Expand the notification of job opportunities to reach different types of job seekers, so we're broadening our candidate pool. We used to only send out to the 2,500 people who are, have expressed an interest through the town website. What we have done is, we now go through Career Builder, we go through professional organizations, Indeed, and we also advertise through the Department of Labor. So, we have certainly expanded it out to many organizations, and we continue to add people to that list. So, what's goal number two? Goal number two is to strengthen outreach, public engagement, and access to town services for communities of color, and to support or change existing services using racial equity best practices. Again, what does all of that mean? So, so this is where, this is about us. This is about your, our town employees. best practices. Again, what does all of that mean? So, so this is where, this is about us. This is about your, our town employees. How are we going to provide the best service to all of the community? They have to come to us, so we have to provide the service, and what kind of service are we providing to them? So, it's making sure that we all are aware of our community. And, so we started by having a couple things. The customer service training took place first, but I'm going to start with number one, which is the implicit bias training. On January 22nd, we held a full-day workshop for all of our department leaders, including Mr. Shoda. So, we were here in this room, and we had two speakers, presenters, who came in, Reverend Dr. Audley Donaldson and Paul Vivian. They've been working together for over 30 years, and they have been very active in the school district as well, but they're both certified diversity trainers in the state of Connecticut, and they've conducted trainings on national level to federal, state, and local government employees, so they know what they're doing, and they do it really well. So, what we did was, we had us all in this room, and they, it was a very interactive workshop, there was a lot of communication, a lot of sharing, things that you would not expect for us to do, but the focus was on diversity, including stereotyping and discrimination around age, race, gender, and abilities and disabilities. The goal of the workshop is to raise awareness, and awareness is the biggest thing that we're trying to do, really, through this diversity committee, because people just simply aren't aware, and so making people aware is the biggest, is our starting point, and that's what we're trying to really nail home. And with this, it will help, it will help everyone through experiences, through videos, and different things that they presented to us, so how diversity can enhance our lives and enhance our community and all the work that we're doing. So, that was the work that they, they shared out with us, and, and it was pretty moving, and I can provide more details to that if you were looking for it, but just so you know, that was a big, a very big part for our leadership team. The customer service training, while you think, oh, it's just another customer service training, that was another really great opportunity where we actually met with every one of our employees. They all came to, we had two different sessions, and the reason is because they need to know what the expectations are of the town and how we should be presenting ourselves, and that is what's projected. As we said, people have to come to us for service, and we have to provide them with the best service we possibly can. So, some of the takeaways from that meeting, whereas, where customer service is about professionalism, accuracy, and responsiveness, it's about being, more than just being courteous, it's about having systems in place. Service matters, and we are the face of the town. Identifying what good service means for your department, so the department leaders went back and talked about what the best service is for their department, and taking every problem and looking at it as an opportunity to learn from. Identifying the wow to customers, what is going to give them that wow effect? It could be something as simple as just taking an extra step by making a follow-up phone call. It's all about the image, basically, when you're in front of a customer, when you're in front of a customer, you're on stage, you're performing. They don't want to know that you had a bad day, or that you're so busy and you can't, you know, or you're having an argument with a coworker. That's not for us to project. The projection is that you are the most important person, and that you're there for them. Benefits of regularly scheduled meetings, so department leaders are working with their departments and just having problems of practice and meeting more regularly, so that way they feel like they're part of the team, and if they had a situation, they can bring it up at those meetings. Answering the phones, we're working on everyone answering the phones in a more, "Good morning, thank you for calling the Southington Human Resource Office, this is Michelle, how may I help you?" One of the worst things that we find is that when somebody answers the phone and says, "Please hold, please hold," so we're trying to make sure that our image is the image that you're all, you know, everyone is expecting throughout the community, so that's one of the things that we're practicing. And knowing what your phone personality is. You can tell if someone's smiling when they're answering the phone or talking to you, and you can tell if they're definitely not smiling. So, we tried to give examples of what that looks like and sounds like. And then dealing with angry or abusive customers, what's the difference and how to handle those things? So, these are just a few things that we talked about. Well, you know, diversity is one thing, but really, how we are handling all of our customers, it's not about one, it's about all. So, we thought that the customer service part of, of this was very important. The website development, as I shared, Lara, Kathy, and Rich, they provided the committee with a preview of what's new and exciting to come with the website. It included a more interactive format. For example, you'll be able to click on a picture, it'll bring you to a link that will tell you all about what that picture represents. So, a lot more interactive, and additionally, there will be an opportunity for those who are viewing the site to select a language. I don't know how many languages, but there will be the opportunity, so if you want to view in Spanish, you just click on the button, and the whole site returns to Spanish. So, some really, really great things from that subcommittee are to be coming forward, but it'll certainly be more user-friendly. So, those are a few other things to, for our goals. Social media and outreach, that's something that's to come. That's, again, that's just promoting and making our website look the way our community looks. Outreach, we're getting out there and talking to people and, and bringing them to understand what our goal is, and talking about diversity and inclusion, and one of the areas that, departments that does this and does this well is the library. They do have a very strong social media presence, as well as an outreach program. So, they're already on top of the game, where the rest of us, once we have our awareness and our goals, then I think that, you know, we'll be, we'll be following right along. But again, it's a work in progress. And then, goal number three, collaborate with the community groups and institutions to eliminate any racial inequity in all areas of government, including education, criminal justice, health, housing, transportation, and economic success. This is the one, this is our final, that will be the last leg, reaching out to the community. Right now, our goal is to make sure that we have all of our practices in place, and that's what I think we're doing a really great job of up, up to this point, and we've made a lot of improvements. Some of the things to continue the work, you mentioned the Employee Policy and Procedure Handbook, so that's 99.9% complete, the draft form. It's off to our attorneys for their review, because we want to make sure that it is all-inclusive, that it is, you know, any legislative updates that have happened over the past few years are incorporated into that handbook. So, we think we have it pretty set, and by May, it'll be presented in draft format for Town Manager, as well as Town Council, to have a complete review of it, and it will include all of these practices and what we feel will be the best way for us moving forward. And we will continue the work with employee awareness and the implicit bias, bias, and the way we see that happening is by our department head meetings. So, we meet monthly, and HR will be bringing, whether it be an article, problem of practice, or any information that may help us continue that work of awareness, because it's not something that's, you can just do in one day, and then you're, you're there. You need continual reminders and guidance. So, we plan to do that. And then, working the community, with the community, again, that's the last leg of the work. So, we can't start the work in the community until we have all the work done behind the scenes, and that is my update for you. I hope that...
Well, thank you so much. You know, a year and a half ago or so, Chris and I were at odds, but, but until tonight, I must say that your report was exactly what I was looking for. And Chris, I just want to give you, acknowledge that to you as well, because it's incumbent upon this body to ensure equity. It's, it starts with us, we have to have the focus, and so I'm very pleased with your report, Michelle, and I'm so proud of this town that, that they're doing the work and will continue to do the work to ensure equity in our community, that we are a diverse town and we're open to diversity and change. Chris, I don't know if you had...
I just want to say, you, you say we were at odds, I would actually modify that a little bit. We, our vision was the same, it's just we had a different path of how to get there.
Yeah, that's right.
And I, and I truly believe that, because I know this is kind of what we both had in vision with this.
Yes. Wasn't it perfect?
Absolutely.
But it's not done, Chris, you know?
Right.
There's still so much left to do, and, and there's really not going to be an end date, because we keep getting new employees, we get different people in town, that, that we would be so inclusive that, as we go on, years from now, you know, Southington has gone through a huge transition over the years, you know, from 10,000 people, 9,000 people when I was a kid, to 44, almost 44,000 people. But we're continuing to grow and develop and move on, and I am so happy. I, I think, taking, approaching it with an open mind and listening to experts in this thing, and evaluating, well, how do we stand up to that? How do we measure up? I'm, I'm so, so pleased, I couldn't be happier. Does anybody else have anything? Yes, Chris?
If I could just make one more comment to my colleagues up here, I have to tell you, I have the pleasure of working with Michelle during the day as well, my job.
Sure.
And, Michelle, your leadership, your attention to detail, your genuine care for all our employees, whether it be Board of Ed and municipal employees, is what drives the success of, of a committee like this, because it's a difficult task, and, and you're, you're perfect to take it on, so thank you for all the work you do.
And difficult to keep people to task on this, you know, because you have a tendency to want to go off and tell your own personal story, or you, and, and that doesn't help. So, yeah, I, I agree. Anybody have any questions for?
Madam Chair, just to chime in, just to piggyback on Chris saying, great update, thank you very much, Michelle, for it. Mark shared with us some of the customer service stuff on the telephone, and I'm not embarrassed to say, I stole it. And that's where I work, and I, my folks are doing it now, and you're absolutely right, people know when you're smiling on the phone, and it's really easy to say, "I'm too busy to do that," or the "please hold," so I've got my folks at work stealing everything that you've kind of brought to the forefront with your folks. And I do want to say, every time I come to the town hall, I'm a pain in the butt, I'll go around, and everyone's always very, very nice, and always puts on a smiley face and is very helpful, either by in-person or by telephone. The staff always is very professional and very kind.
Great.
So, keep up the good work.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, so, Michelle, yeah, thank you. I, I think the diversity committee is so important. When I looked at the information and the goals, is, it says racial inclusion and equity, but we're talking about, well, diversity, right?
Everything.
I mean, we're talking about disabled, gender identity, sexual orientation.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess that's, that's, you know, the, the purpose is excellent, but then each of the goals, to me, it focused a little bit more on racial, which is obviously extremely important. I just wonder if that could be looked at and...
Absolutely.
To show that it's, it's everything.
Absolutely. I think when the committee started, it really was just people throwing bits and pieces together, but I believe that through the body of work that we're actually have rolled out to this point, it absolutely has been an all-inclusive. So, it may not reflect it as much so in the goals, but I understand your point, and we can certainly revisit those.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'll be, I'd like to, I mean, we could sit in on these meetings?
Mm-hmm. They're always open to the public, and they're advertised, just like any other meeting.
All right. I'd be interested in, excited to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, we look forward to the next chapter, so thank you so much. Mark, thank you very much for being at the helm.
You saw the names up there, and all of them were instrumental in this, and I know that the bottom line is, Michelle and I are here to present it, but the fact of the matter is, is a lot of those guys did the groundwork, and especially to the people who are not town employees, they brought so much to the table, so thank you to all of them. And as the chair said, we're nowhere near completed yet, and I don't think we're going to be completed ever, but I think in this particular case, we're on the right, right track.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Michelle, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, as I conclude my report, we will need an executive session tonight for contractual matters in real estate, and there'll be no action outside of executive session.
Okay, very good, thank you. Town Attorney's, oh, any other questions to the Town Manager? Hearing none, and we'll go right into the Town Attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing on my report is the 824 Road and Bridge Ordinance. Just wanted to give you an update that on February 18th, last Tuesday, Jim Carbone gave a detailed presentation to the Planning and Zoning Board regarding this ordinance, and they did approve it unanimously, so that is something that's necessary for these 824 actions. Does anybody have any questions regarding what happened there at the Planning and Zoning? All right. The next two items are, could be joined together, if you will. We have two fully executed contracts for two new open space purchases of 136 School Street and 1205 Mary Nav. They need also to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah, Attorney Taylor, do we need two separate motions for them?
I believe we do.
They're separated.
Yes, they are separated. I just joined them together, since we do have two, two contracts there.
No problem.
Any questions?
Any questions for Attorney Taylor?
Straightforward.
Very good, thank you. We're going to open up Public Communications right now. Any member of the public is invited to come and, and speak for five minutes, and, so the microphone is open, please tell us your name and address. Good evening, Ilia.
Good evening, Toby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Michelle.
Christmas. Last time, I give you a deed to everyone, to recall. I give you the old plans. Better say, I never had.
Thank you.
He was the loyal sign. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Something different kind.
Thank you.
Well, no, that is futile.
Thank you.
That is futile, madam, to learn all, I come out. Would that be mine? To say, the two managers said to the council after council, they really never have the property, and that here, he goes, "You drive, making me fool."
Thank you.
You can push.
Do you want to pass these down for you?
Well, I rather have this way.
Thank you.
You can.
Thank you.
I pay tax.
Thank you.
Chairman after chairman, they were not a thief. He showed his spirit all around, the way I never have the property, never before.
Thank you, Ilia.
I know the history, my mom was telling me so well.
Thank you.
Can have, but you know, you done yourself. You, I feel, don't make me lie in the town. I woke up my head above, I know five minutes you never understood. This have been forty years, four zero years, I appear with the front of the council, and you aren't telling me that you don't understood what was spoken about. Before chairman, teacher, never know what the deed was. The police chief hang off from me, came on my house, run me up, then I have looked at the investigation, when it come to little thing, the ghost that we investigated. And then, besides all that, my correction in front of the council said, "We thank you, Mr. Weisell and Marco Shoda, the manager, that they teach us that you never have the property." Mr. Richard, it's a flag, it's a Bible, and he lying like this, nobody does anything? You know why? Because people like me, there is no law. There's a different kind of law. I want to get paid, don't put me on and think that's Mr. Fuschello intended to get paid. I want to get paid, because besides, you steal my taxi, you stole my property and my forty years' progress. and my forty years' progress. I don't think if it happened to you, Democratic or Republican, red way, you called the cellist, let's fix this. You don't fix, pay me. I never dream that come this country, I find such dishonesty. But my mother told me so well, this Elio, I can tell you, I will have explained, I find out. You did the same people that you got across after the runway for Medge, and you keep doing. The name is might be American, but the local government so on is not American. All I want to get paid, not the money I lost, because I have a class of John here, has to made, so I hear, I pay over $3,000, because I want to know, like a San Thomas, I want to see. I lost over a million and a half dollars, I would have been progress. All I want, Daniel Laporte said $200,000, pay me off, I would heck with it.
Okay, thank you.
The worst life I have dreamed. And Mr. Robinson said to me at that time, "Elio, go in America, you imagine you do well." Well, to whom? Chairman Rich, me, and Weisell knew the beginning would happen. Here was, rest in peace, Rosa Marie Champagne, she said, "Elio, you can't fight the city hall." I said, "I not fight the city hall."
Okay.
I fight the law.
Elio, you know, you heard the buzzer go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I glad that you showed that I got to think for the lawyer and everything. Pull up, give me hands, pay me off, I would heck with it. I got fight on my family, every night I come here. Don't go, I say, let's, it's anyway, business is, I pay tax, I pay the property, I pay the lawyer, the Sokolaski, liar, even like David, I carry afterwards it through.
I don't want to see you get so upset.
Okay, you know everything, I guess.
No, no, I don't know anything.
No, I know, nobody knows anything.
I'm just saying, Elio, I don't want you upset.
Only I want to know, I am a citizen, I want to get paid, put him in agenda, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Elio, we're done. We're done. Thank you, Elio.
Did you, nobody answer?
Well, because we're not going to answer, because there's no one here that feels that, that you're entitled to that money.
Nobody here that want?
They, there's no one on, sitting up here that feels that you are entitled to that money. So, so I don't know how else to say that to you, other than to say, you're coming here and, and speaking to us every, you come to more meetings than I go to, Elio. And the thing is, is that I, you get upset, you, you're, it breaks your heart, but nothing has changed, Elio. And so tonight, I let you speak, and I didn't let you go longer than normally. It's because I respect you, and I care for you, but it's done now. We're done talking about your situation.
I've got a lawyer here too. You know, they even cut the suit on the property. They cut the suit, they take evidence out, you know, where we are.
Elio, do you want to keep those, those pictures?
I don't do anything, nobody does anything, because I am not you.
Elio, do you want to keep these pictures? Because you're getting ready to sit down.
I will.
Okay. Thank you, Elio. Is there any...
I want to get paid, madam, I want to put in agenda, please.
I know that.
No, I'm not asking for anything, I got a lawyer, I say, he can explain a lot better.
Okay, is there anyone else that needs to come before the council? Thank you, Elio. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Hearing no one else, we're going to close Public Communication, and let's go into old business. Item A, action on the 824 for the Road and Bridge Ordinance, which is the product of the public hearing that we had today.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, is it second by Mr. Morelli? Let's, let's just call the roll, just so we have it all down.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item B, action on the public hearing, setting a referendum date. Mr. Shota?
May I make a suggestion, motion, motion to approve the ordinance subject to a referendum by the general public, to be on November 3rd, 2020.
Uh-oh, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, ma'am, roll call, please.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it, I'm sorry.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Unanimous. Item C, action on the Board of Finance Minutes?
Motion to approve the modified minutes.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good, thank you, it's approved unanimously. Referral, item D, referral for the 824 for 136 School Street.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a second. Call the roll, please.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Unanimous. Item E, referral for the 824 on 1205 Marion Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Call the roll, please.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Approved unanimously. New business, tax refunds.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the tax refunds that are outlined in our packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like a motion to adjourn into executive session, barring the public, but inviting the Town Manager, the Town Attorney, may have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All done. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.